To manufacture sign for our street or stop sign and all that. So that, uh, that's, that's what I said is not functional. And we're gonna make it more functional and smaller footage footprint that, that is gonna work.
So you think the four hundred will complete that building?
We will, yes, we will, uh, we will, uh, stay with that budget.
So this is not a portion of a page you go and do it in future?
No, no, it's, it's one shot.
That's what I was looking for.
It's gonna be a shed type building. It's not gonna be a kind of catwalk for lack of the term. But, but it's gonna be functional and more organized for, for all four departments. Uh, the next item, uh, we are buying a new dump truck for our city department. And, uh, the, the protocol we have, uh, anytime we get a new, uh, request for equipment, uh, we send it to our fleet department and let the fleet supervisor tell us whether or not that equipment is needed on basis of downtime and expenditure on that vehicle. I, I think, uh, this is the best way to purchase new equipment because everybody wants a new equipment. That's just a human nature. But, but we send it to our fleet maintenance and he has to certify that vehicle is not, uh, is cost prohibitive from maintenance standpoint and also from downtime. So that's, that's what we are spending eighty-four thousand dollars for a new dump truck. Uh, also the same thing, we need a F two fifty truck, uh, uh, for that same department. Again, same exercise, uh, we went through the same exercise and made sure that, uh, we do need a F two fifty truck, uh, for, for the department. Uh, the next item is the boom mower, uh, mower that, uh, uh, that has a boom that can go up and down and, uh, and more ditches or, uh, uh, area that is not, uh, accessible on the ground. And, uh, we actually, uh, this equipment, we bid, uh, online on two of them. And one time we missed it by a thousand dollar and the other time we missed it by a couple of thousand dollar. So we keep going on, uh, on auction side that are eligible for city government. And we came up to twenty-seven thousand dollars, but we missed it two times because we were outbid by somebody else. We're gonna be more aggressive because I put a limit on the bid and, uh, but after we found out we missed it by a thousand dollars. So we're gonna be a little bit more generous, maybe a couple of thousand dollars, maybe we can, but, uh, we, we do need that equipment for sure. Right now, the street department borrow, uh, that equipment from, uh, similar equipment from park department when they have.
Is, is that just to mow grass, it's up on a hill or something? It's not to trim back trees or anything?
They do that too.
It does trim as well?
To some degree, they do that.
So we have one of these in the parks department now, but we need another one for the street department?
Right, because a park department, basically, they use their twenty-four seven, especially during the summertime. And the street department is in charge of, uh, uh, doing, uh, uh, ditches, uh, cleaning ditches and all that, and they're gonna use that equipment. But right now they are, they are borrowing, uh, from park department whenever they need. Uh, the next item, uh, there is a, uh, new law that, uh, basically says all the sign has to be, uh, reflective and, uh, uh, all be replaced. And this gadget is gonna show us, uh, uh, whether or not the sign needs to be replaced from the, uh, reflectivity, uh, quality, not, uh, could be good on daytime, but not be reflective during the night. So we're gonna buy this equipment and it's gonna save us, uh, to make sure which one is reflective and which one needs to be replaced.
Is this just a piece of test equipment or does this actually make the sign for?
No, no, this is a gadget that you shoot to the sign and then tell you whether or not it's reflective, has the reflectivity quality or not.
Okay.
Because by sunlight and all that, they lose their reflectivity quality. It's hard for me to say. Uh, the next item, uh, we still continue putting one hundred fifty thousand dollar a year, uh, to buy a fire truck. That's embedded in our budget. So it is not there, uh, it's not gonna reflect anything on our budget because it's embedded in our budget. And we do that, uh, and every five years we buy a new fire truck rather than borrow a six, seven hundred thousand dollar fire truck and pay a million dollars or more. I think that's.
So will this be the first hundred and fifty in that pool or is there already?
No, we've been doing that, uh.
I know we're just, we bought one, I think, in twenty fifteen. I didn't know if we put more money back.
Right now, I think with this one, we're gonna have six hundred thousand dollar, uh, that we buy when the next time is up for, uh.
Okay.
For, uh, for replacement. Also, uh, we do have a, uh, truck five aerial platform that needs to be completely rehab rather than buy new one. I believe it's, uh, about four hundred thousand dollar. We put hundred thousand dollar last year and, uh, we are putting, uh, another two hundred thousand dollar this year and maybe by next year we have enough money to, to get that rehab and, uh, and, uh, about four hundred thousand dollar. This item is, is kind of funding. This is a payment that we are doing for the truck that we bought like ten, fifteen years ago. They borrowed money. Our payment is sixty-five thousand dollar about ten years. We are on eight years of ten years that, uh, we are paying that payment is embedded in our, uh, budget.
What, what happens at the end of year ten? Is, do we keep the truck or the truck?
No, we keep the truck. And then now if that truck needs to be replaced, uh, after twenty years, the one fifty that we put up there is gonna replace it. Uh, uh, the money that we are putting one fifty each year is gonna replace that after.
So the, we're not gonna just lose this truck at the end of year ten?
No, no.
Okay. And it will still have usable life of?
Okay, uh, the other, uh, item is, uh, our fire department has some difficulty. We saw for the rebuild for radio communication, we are adding another repeater to make their telecommunication more, uh, more functional. And then, uh, uh, the other item is a preemption devices that we put on traffic signal, uh, and we do have it in, uh, we do have it on some signal. And this is to put it on another three or four signal that when fire truck comes, uh, if the light is, uh, red, they can preempt it to green and then delay the, uh, the time to go to the fire, uh, response. The next item, uh, this is very important item. Uh, it costs about a million dollars. Uh, this is gonna be the new radio infrastructure for police department, fire department, public works. Uh, we do have a system that is out of date, uh, from the operational maintenance and, and even equipment. And, uh, it's gonna be about a million dollars. We are putting, uh, five hundred thousand dollar toward that, uh, hundred thousand dollar embedded into the budget. Uh, we are showing four hundred thousand dollar additional expenditure. I think, uh, once this budget is adopted, I think the, uh, fire department, police department, public works can get with other agency, uh, maybe county and sheriff department. And even chief told me maybe other cities, uh, could be interested to create a trunking system. Uh, but, but at least our cost is about a million dollar and, uh, we are, we're gonna be about, uh, uh, about six hundred thousand dollar toward that. We can start the process and, uh, and ultimately get it down the road.
Have we defined what, uh, we think the radios need to do and, and capability like that so that as we get five or six hundred thousand in there, we could start buying it? Or do we have to wait until we hit the million dollars and then go buy?
Right, some of that money is gonna go for, uh, uh, doing the, uh, design, what kind of a system. And, and chief is gonna work with other, uh, public agencies, see if they're gonna jump in like, uh, sheriff department, Texas Department of Public Safety. But we can start the process, but not the installation part of it. When it comes to installation, we need the million, the total million dollars. But we can start the dialogue and, uh, pre, uh, design, preliminary design and all that.
I would think a lot of that already exists. It says, this is how you get everybody talking together. I mean, it's not a brand new problem.
I think, uh, selection.
I don't know to follow up on that. Are we paying for the design? I mean, it looks like these people ought to be able to come in and say, you need X number radios, you need some this, that, whatever.
Right, we need to select a, a manufacturer and, uh, it's not, it is a simple process, but it's a complicated process. First of all, we need to determine how many entities is gonna be part of it. And chief is gonna watch, chief, uh, Baskin and chief, how are gonna start that process? Uh, so we need to determine how many entities are interested to be part of this. Once we get that, then we're gonna look at, uh, other cities, uh, manufacturing, see, uh, uh, talk to other agencies, see, uh, talk to CAG, North Central Texas Council of Government, uh, they're gonna be a big resource for us. Uh, which system is good, which system is gonna provide service, uh, things of that nature, but, uh, and then select the manufacturer and then go purchase and install.
I would think Dallas or Austin or San Antonio, I mean, I would assume they've already got these and we ought to be able to say, what have you got? And not have to sit down or do a lot of design. I don't think you're talking about designing the radio. I think you're talking about the overall system. But to me, I would think that you could contact them and say, what are you using? And what's its failure? What would you recommend? And go from there. And that, that doesn't look like a real extensive or cost.
Well, you are correct. Uh, uh, again, uh, we, we create a, uh, internal task force and they're gonna work all that and, and bring it back to you. Uh, but you are correct, you shouldn't, again, in a way is a simple process, in a way is a complicated process because, uh, we need to know upfront who is gonna join us and then, uh, determine the number of units, the number of, and they go to, uh, uh, other cities and manufacturing and who's available in our region and all that. But we keep you updated on our process. Uh, the next item, uh, we are putting hundred thousand dollar, uh, to, uh, complete JLU Community Park. We have forty thousand dollar embedded in our budget, so it reflects only sixty additional thousand dollar. But I think this is gonna get us go, uh, go toward completion of the, uh, park, uh, pieces by pieces. Uh, we are also, uh, putting, uh, three hundred thousand dollar, uh, for a sport park expansion. Uh, we already have hundred thousand dollar embedded in our budget, so there is additional two thousand dollar and, uh.
That primarily is going to make the road out to, uh, money strategy and.
And parking lot.
Streets of parking.
That's right. Uh, we need a, a park department need a, uh, the spring unit replacement. Again, uh, uh, we just don't replace anything unless it's needed from the standpoint of downtime and cost of maintenance. And, uh, I think we created a system that, uh, let us, uh, let us do that. We are, uh, buying, uh, three new, uh, police vehicle at a cost of hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred eighteen thousand dollar, which is embedded in our budget and does not reflect any other cost. We are buying a new sedan for our, uh, CID that is in bad shape. And our CID officer, uh, as most of you know, uh, they have to work in undercover vehicle and they need a reliable vehicle to, for investigation. And, uh, we are buying this sedan at a cost of estimated twenty-three thousand dollar. And then the same thing with.
And then the seizure fund we use there?
Well, uh, yes and no, but, uh, more strongly no because they already have, they already have a vehicle. And seizure fund prevent us to spend any money on maintenance. Uh, if they did not have a vehicle, uh, uh, we feel more comfortable using seizure fund. But in this case, I think is very questionable if we use seizure fund, seizure fund because they already have a vehicle and falls into maintenance. Uh, we need to follow federal guidelines. Uh, again, uh, community development, uh, we are proposing to have a three-phase, three percent pay increase across the board for all of our employee effective January first, twenty eighteen. And, and the reason of that day has to do with our health insurance policy. Most of you know, we restructure, uh, we restructure our health insurance policy to different, uh, categories rather than single type that we had before. Also, uh, we reduce the subsidy for dependent, uh, from eighty-six percent to seventy-five percent. Uh, I feel that, uh, uh, this increase is gonna help our employee to some degree to, uh, for that, uh, uh, additional cost. Uh, we, this past Saturday, we also advertised for our new health insurance and in, uh, three or four weeks, uh, we're gonna bring to you, uh, what, uh, what's out there, who is gonna, uh, who's interested on our new plan. Uh, uh, we have two kind of plan right now. And, uh, uh, we anticipate, uh, uh, some saving, uh, on basis of our, uh, loss ratio that we have at the present time, at least for twenty eighteen, uh, because our, our loss ratios are relatively good.
Now, so that anticipated savings, that is not reflected in this budget sheet, is it?
That's a good question, no. Uh, to answer you, uh, we, uh, back in old days, we used to have at one point, we had one point six million dollars in our insurance fund balance. Today we have zero. So we need to, uh, and, and the reason for that was because we subsidize family and dependent and we use that money. Actually, that money was negative to a tune of four hundred thousand dollar. And we, uh, changed the contribution of nine thousand seven hundred dollars per employee uh, to ten thousand seven hundred dollars to, uh, make the four hundred thousand dollar negative to zero. Uh, all the funds, uh, are paying, uh, to insurance fund, uh, instead of nine thousand seven hundred dollars, ten thousand seven hundred dollars per employee to, uh, make it zero. So having said that, we need to build up, uh, uh, our fund balance in insurance. Right now it's zero, was negative four hundred thousand dollar. We change it to zero, uh, right now, but we need to build it up to half a million or million. So any saving that is gonna materialize coming, we need to put in our fund balance. Our, our insurance fund balance shouldn't be at negative or zero. Is that it? Answer your question?
I think I understand what you're saying. I don't know. I mean, uh, is that in case we're going self-insurance or is that?
Well, anything, uh, anything, either self-insurance or if, uh, if, uh, if the city decide, uh, all the funds shouldn't pay like, uh, uh, ten, ten thousand seven hundred dollars per employee to insurance fund. Maybe one day you wanna say, okay, let's go back to ninety-seven hundred dollars or, uh, so it's a transfer of employee from different funds to, to that. But, uh, uh, you hit it on the head. Even if you wanna have a self-insurance, you need to have, uh, something in your fund balance. But as of today, that we are submitting a budget to you, the, the health insurance fund balance is zero and, uh, as of two weeks ago was negative four hundred thousand dollar.
All right, so. No, I think you're maybe gonna ask what I was gonna ask.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I mean, I don't know, I missed a little, uh, uh, I mean, I thought we were gonna see some savings that we could pass on to taxpayers or pass on to employees or pass on to, to other things, not just put in a bank account.
Well, you're gonna see that, uh, coming, uh, let us receive the bid, okay? And then we're gonna tell you, for example, for twenty eighteen, uh, with ten thousand seven hundred dollars per employee, what we're gonna pay, let's say, to Blue Cross Blue Shield. And then we have like six hundred thousand dollar. And then we tell you, do you wanna put it on fund balance? Do you wanna do something else with it? But right now, as, as this, at this moment, um, the, uh, is zero. And as of two weeks ago, when, uh, I noticed that in our budget was minus four hundred seventy thousand dollar. Uh, but, but we can tell you, uh, once we receive the bid saying, uh, okay, come January first, uh, we're gonna have like hundred thousand dollar a month in our fund balance. And then you decide what you wanna do with it, uh, if anything.
But when the insurance committee met, the broker pretty much gave us assurances that in aggregate with, with juice and the city combined, the plan change we made would save the city six hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand dollars, right?
That's right.
Okay. And has anything happened to change that expectation?
No, no, no. What, what he said, okay, what he said, okay, once we receive a bid, come January first, twenty eighteen.
Right.
The new policy is gonna be like six hundred thousand dollar less than.
Should be.
What we are paying right now. If we are paying four million dollars, it's gonna be three hundred, three million four hundred thousand. Uh, that is gonna be activated January first, twenty eighteen.
Right.
So the, the first month of January, uh, let's say January twenty eighteen, the first month, we can come to you and say, okay, yeah, uh, uh, for first month, we have a eighty-five thousand dollar save.
Right. What do you wanna do?
Sorry?
And what do you wanna do with it?
Right, right.
Okay.
So we can make that decision once we have our number, basically?
Well, we, once, uh, we, we receive bids in a couple of weeks, again, everything is gonna be from January first, twenty eighteen beyond. Then we can tell you, yes, once we, uh, pay, uh, like I said, um, X amount of money to travelers or Blue Cross Blue Shield or Aetna, then we have so much saving, uh, monthly or every six months or entire year for twenty eighteen.
Well, it'll be, it'll be nine months in this, in this year, but it'll be January through September, right?
In, in this calendar year?
Yeah, right, that's what I'm, yeah, in the, yeah.
Right, you are correct.
January one eighteen through Sept-, uh, through September.
Right, you are correct. Because, because even our budget to start, uh, October first, October, November, December, we are still, uh, paying, uh, our insurance is still the same as.
Right.
Okay. Okay, and, and TMRS is the, uh, retirement system for everybody, citywide and juice except our fire department. Uh, right now we are paying eleven point eighteen percent, uh, and, uh, TMRS, uh, asking us to increase our rate from eleven eighteen to eleven sixty-two. Then that's gonna be additional thirteen thousand dollar towards our, uh, TMRS retirement. FR and R, uh, we are contributing, uh, an additional one-half, uh, percent to the, uh, uh, plan at a cost of thirty-three thousand dollar. Again, most of you remember four years ago, we were at seventy-five years liability. Today we are at forty-four and our goal is to bring it down as much as we can, either by law or by, uh, uh, any other, uh, voluntary recommendation or even, uh, I think at one point, the state was gonna pass a law to make it thirty years, but.
At the fireman's, uh, retirement and, uh, pension board meeting that, that Summer and I attended this morning, uh, we had the guy that runs the amortization in there. And, uh, while the increases that between the fireman and the city has been doing over the past few years, uh, we're in that category of where we're gonna reach the forty, uh, the amortization at forty percent. But, uh, the statewide, uh, pension review board has said forty is not correct, it needs to be at thirty percent. So in questioning, uh, Mr. Kreider who did that and Summer jumped in here by quote wrong, he said that, uh, in order to get, for the city to get in, in the vicinity where we're looking at about a thirty percent, that, uh, it's gonna run somewhere around a two percent or three percent. So my feeling is we do a half a percent per year increase and look at it that we're probably gonna fit. Does that fit pretty close to what you understood, Summer?
Yes.
So I think that, uh, a half a percent and just, you know, target that and, and look at that. Uh, I don't think it's been passed by the state senator or from the house, but the pension review board for the state has said it needs to be thirty percent.
Yeah, you are correct there. And, and again, uh, again, past four years, uh, we brought it down from seventy-four to forty-four and we still continue.
Infinity.
Right, and we still, uh, uh, our goal and objective is to lower it, uh, to make sure, uh, our liability become less and less. And then, um, the next item is just, uh, we need to additional ten thousand dollar for INS debt service. Now, the, the three, uh, line in red is our obligation. The first one is, uh, chapter three eighty on sixty-five acres, uh, next to Home Depot. We anticipate the total sales tax, uh, generated by that entity of sixty-five acres total is gonna be fifteen thousand dollar that we need to reimburse toward one point seven five million dollars, uh, chapter three eighty obligation.
Is that over and above what we did last year or?
Right.
Okay.
And then the next item is the mall. And then the next item is the mall, again, that's in chapter three eighty sales tax. We anticipate the sales tax rebate today is gonna be seventy-five million dollar, I mean seventy-five thousand dollar toward two million dollars in twenty years developers agreement. And then the next item is tax increment financing that the entire sixty-five acres generate seventy-four thousand three hundred sixty-four dollars property tax. Again, the last one is property tax, the first two are sales tax. The, the last item is the change to our MNO is a total of three hundred thirty-six thousand dollar that is in this budget here, that be additional cost to the maintenance and operation. So, those are our expenditure for a total of two million four hundred fifty-two thousand six hundred fifty-three dollars.
Assured?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
What, what are these changes to?
For example, for example, is hundred four thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars to police department, forensic lab fee, patrol car docking station, plastic, plastic vest, promotional exam, less metal program, duty pistol, pistol replacement, gas mask replacement, tactical vest. For example, one hundred four, four thousand dollar of it is in our police department. Fire department, again, we are buying our fire department ceramic vests, not as many as we buy for police department, but we are buying few for them in case they go to an incident, that somebody has a AR-15 or a rifle. So, we are buying seventeen thousand eight hundred eighty dollars ceramic vest for them to protect them in case there is a shooting. And then nine thousand five hundred sixty-seven dollars exhaust system for the vehicle in a, in a fire station. So, those are, and traffic department has thirty-four thousand dollar more market, recreation is twenty-six thousand dollar more, we can provide you a list.
No, I mean, I think it's a good, good idea. I mean, basically, this is capital improvements for the most part, not personnel.
What is not capital is, is, is something within the organization that is needed as part of equipment and all that. We don't classify it as a, as a capital either, because they're using on kind of, but you can call it capital.
It's not, it's not something that's gonna have to be added every year.
No, what has to be maintained, or like, like, chief is gonna come, you know, four years from now and say, well, there is a new technology, I need a new vest, or lighter vest, or less, more friendly, or, you know, but, but is a part of the MNO, not, not a capital that. That's what we call the changes to MNO. And, and each department has some, we do have a list of if you are interested in the budget. Okay, now.
Before you go on, the last three events that I attended up at the auditorium upstairs, the audio has been very poor. And, you know, you can hear the music, but you can't understand what the people are saying or anything. I think that somewhere along here, and I don't have a number value, because I haven't done that kind of study, but we've got an old analog system. And I think somewhere we need to figure out and come up with a way to improve that to a digital system, something that's gonna work, that generates the kind of audio that we spend million dollars in improving inflation, you can't hear what the entertainer is saying, that's a very big distractor. So, I think somewhere along the line, we need to figure out how or what it would take to improve that.
I agree, and we can look at it, and the expenditure should come from hotel, motel occupancy tax. And we look at it, and, and then we take care of it, once we get the budget finished.
I mean, we've got a beautiful auditorium, we get a lot of compliments on it, but if you can't understand what the entertainers are saying, it really detracts.
I agree.
I doubt a lot of people come and complain.
Yeah, we look at it, man.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And, and so, the next item, basically, I've been talking about the expenditure, now I'm talking about the revenue. What kind of revenue, additional revenue we have? Number one, we are getting eight hundred sixteen thousand three hundred twenty dollars additional property tax. We budgeted five point nine six percent increase in our sales tax. The actual so far is eleven point eight five, we have couple of months going. We anticipate additional four hundred eight thousand dollar sales tax that is going back to our fund balance. And then we are proposing, next year, we're gonna have seven percent additional sales tax over this year to a tune of five hundred twelve thousand nine hundred dollars. Now, you might ask, why, why eleven eight point five percent, you're going to seven percent? Because I think last year, we had a, we had a lot of restaurant, a lot of retail that generated this kind of sales tax. We do not see the surge like we had before this coming fiscal year.
So, you think it's the opening of these places, it's not gonna be sustained at that level?
Yeah, but.
Because my question was gonna be, is it an increase seven percent over the eleven point eight, or is it gonna replace the five point nine six?
No, no, we.
Saying it's gonna replace the five point nine.
We forecast seven percent over total sales tax that we collect. So, is include that eleven point percent, I mean eleven percent. There is a seven percent total of.
Back up.
Okay, whatever sales tax we collect to the end of September, let's say that number is ten dollars. We saying seven percent of that ten dollars, we forecast additional revenue.
So, you're saying seven percent over that ten dollars? So, whatever we get in our eleven point eight five actual, you're gonna take that number and add seven percent to it?
Exactly, you are correct.
Wow.
And then, then we are transferring one million one hundred twenty-three thousand four hundred thirty-three dollars from our fund balance, and we are keeping twenty percent of our fund balance. This is, the one million one twenty-three four three three is above the twenty percent. You still have twenty percent in our fund balance that we are not recommending you to touch that because of couple of reasons. So, having, having said that, our revenue matches our expenditure. So, you do have a balanced budget before you with the numbers that we submitted. Also, we are, we are getting seventy-nine thousand dollar that GMA owes fund balance and, and owes water utility. If you all remember, we spent about half a million dollars last year on GMA. We borrowed from.
That was for the renovation.
Fund balance, and general fund balance, and water utility fund balance. So, we are paying back those two funds, seventy-nine thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars.
At the, the twenty percent target, what does that, what does that leave in that, in that fund balance, over five million dollars?
Right.
Is it over six million?
Each, each, right, that's right. Every one percent that you reduce that, you can take two hundred fifty thousand dollar additional fund balance. And another, if you wanna go, we are not recommending, you are not suggesting, if you go to nineteen, you have additional two hundred fifty thousand dollar you can pull.
I think what he's asking is, with the twenty percent, how much does that mean?
It's five million some odd number.
Yeah.
But each one percent is two hundred fifty thousand dollar. You, you have it in your budget book, up to you to the actual.
This projected sales tax increase that, that we got this year, which is so far four hundred eight thousand, may end up being five hundred thousand or whatever, where does that go?
That's already gone to the fund balance, that's part of the one million one twenty-three that we are transferring.
Okay, and it's.
Any, any money from sales tax or property tax comes to the city, and they go to the fund, fund balance for, for our piggy bank, so to speak. But, but it is, that four hundred eight thousand dollar is into that one million one twenty-three included in.
Is that four hundred eight number, are projected at the end of the year? That's not amount we've actually collected out?
That's correct, that, that can change some fraction. Now, one of the reason that we are not suggesting or recommending to deviate from twenty percent target for fund balance is, is the narrative under the law. We have a lot of challenges on our water utility in this town. And our challenges are, number one, we have four to five thousand acres of property southwest of Greenview, doesn't have any sewer, and was annexed almost twenty years ago. Nineteen ninety-eight, I guess that's close enough, twenty years ago. They annexed four to five thousand acres and doesn't have sanitary sewer. So, that's one challenge. The other challenge is, we have a lot of water and a lot of pressure north part of Greenview. But our growth is toward south and southwest, and we need more volume and more pressure in that part of town because it's, it's growing. So, in a nutshell, we anticipate that next two years or so, we're gonna have about twenty-five million dollars expenditure on water utility. That's water and sewer, and mostly south part of town and alarm either recorder. To do that, we are proposing to increase our water utility grade by five percent next fiscal year to generate five hundred eighty-four thousand dollar revenue to do plus minus thirteen million dollars of that project. And hopefully, in fiscal eighteen, nineteen, another five percent to, to finance the additional twelve million dollars south part of Greenview, give more access to sanitary sewer, water pressure, and water availability. Now.
So, what you're saying is that five hundred eighty-four thousand, one hundred thousand, or two million?
Give or take, depending to the day that we set bond and what's the rate. However, the, the fund balance, the twenty percent that we set is gonna be a major factor of what kind of rate we get. So, that's what I'm cautious, that we keep our twenty percent to get a lower rate for our water utility, even though the twenty-five million dollars or thirteen million dollars has nothing to do with the property tax. But Wall Street, look at the city as how health, how financially healthy they are to establish a rating, and subsequently, the rating means interest rate. So, if we get double A minus, double A plus, or that, that's from Moody and Finch. So, those are very important, and is a, is a system that some of you know is very complicated. But they look at how much cash you have in your account, which is basically our fund balance. And so, it's very important. So, I would then, that's what we wanna keep the twenty percent intact, so we get a better rate, pay less interest, and subsequently, rate payer paying less for water and sewer. And then the next page is, basically, it shows that our certified tax value went up eight percent finally to a tune of one billion eight hundred thirty million nine hundred ninety-five thousand one hundred eighty, thirty-nine dollars. Our tax rate is six nine nine, effective tax rate is six seven one one. And for most of you, some of you that don't know, effective tax rate is the same number that generate same amount of money for operation and maintenance of the previous year. And then we are showing you last three fiscal year, what are our debt service, which is very important, and what is, what is left of it to, for us to operate this city. This year, we are, we know that almost twenty-five cents of every dollar we collect is gonna go paid for interest and principal of what this city borrowed in the past. And forty-five cents goes toward our operation and maintenance. I'd be glad to answer any question, and Summer is, if not, Summer is gonna do a quick summary of our budget.
I have one question about the rollback rate, I think I need to be educated on that. I thought the rollback rate was eight cents over the effective tax rate?
No.
It's not?
And then, the actual effective tax rate for this coming fiscal year is sixty-seven cents one one.
Okay, the rollback?
Rollback is seventy, rollback is.
Seven.
Seven zero zero eight nine, point seven zero zero eight nine. We are point zero zero one eight nine under rollback. For mathematics.
It seems like an awfully small spread between the effective and rollback.
Yeah, what?
No, no, okay, effective, okay.
Yeah, you're talking about less than three cents between our effective rate.
That's right.
Less than three, almost.
That's right, you are correct, yeah, less than three cents.
Between effective and rollback, I'm saying, yeah. Usually, it's, I mean, it's a lot more than that.
Actually, we don't calculate those. Those, those are calculated by county tax assessor collector from the numbers that they receive from county tax appraisal district. So, we have nothing to do with that, we're just a recipient of those numbers.
I think we need to look at it, you know?
We look at it, we look at it.
I mean, that's the legislature now, move that down to four cents, four per, to four cents or six cents, right? So, what, what do they move it down to? What, what is the benchmark for the four cents over the, I thought it was four cents over the effective rate? Or six cents, whatever the, whatever the House bill is, or Senate bill is down there.
The last briefing I got, which was John Hyde, kind of a thing, they said it's, right now, the House is talking about six percent.
Six cents, right?
Six cents.
Right, it's not percent, six cents. But it's over the, above the effective rate, is it not?
It's a percentage.
It's a percentage.
Oh, it is, okay.
Not the cent, not percent.
Sorry.
Yeah, but it was six percent. I think the Senate was talking four percent, and the House, they haven't passed it yet as of our briefing on Friday.
This is about four, five percent, it's not eight, where it currently is.
Yeah, but you have to figure into, we're a city that could, that technically collects additional sales tax to lower that. So, I mean, I can send you this sheet, it factors everything in. So, without the additional sales tax that we collect, our rollback rate is one point one four percent. But then you factor in the additional sales tax that we collect, that was passed, I don't even know, years ago, that factors into that, so you take out point four, it's a sales tax rate adjustment is what it is. And that's, you know, the Randy Weiner's office does that for us. And it's point four four percent that's adjusted out of that one point one four percent, which drops the rollback rate to the point seven two zero.
I just remember sitting here a few years ago, and we were talking about about the same effective rate. same effective rate, but we were talking about a rollback rate that was like 78 or 77 or something like that.
Let me check with the, about appraisal district and assessor and come back to you. Make sure that...
I'm not necessarily wanting to raise it, I just don't think that's right.
We check, we double check and make sure that...
Well, I'm kind of surprised, maybe we're so close.
The rollback rate last year was 0.73%, or 0.73, I'm sorry. So that's what it was last year, so I don't think it's too far off. But we'll, we'll double check it for sure.
If that's the case, the legislature is basically setting our tax rate, because we've only got three cents to work with.
Correct.
I mean, there's...
If we, and I did some calculations, if the Senate, that Senate bill had passed at the 4% increase, we would've been over the rollback rate and the 5% increase. I didn't do 6%, but I did 4% and 5% increase, and we would've been over the rollback rate with the 69 cents.
I'm not surprised about, I kind of anticipated this, that we would be, our tax rate at 699 would be close to the rollback rate. But I'm, I'm a little bit surprised at the spread of this.
Well, the other aspect is with the new, if the, when the Senate and House pass it, they're talking mandatory rollback. And right, as it is right now without that, it's, the citizens can request a rollback.
Yes.
So that's a major difference right there.
We double check with both agencies, make sure that we can...
Thank you, I appreciate the, personally, I'll, I'll speak for myself at least. Appreciate the summary sheet that you gave, it helps me a lot instead of, let me create this 150 pages.
Anything else on that budget?
Yeah, Summer is gonna make a quick, you know...
It'll, it'll be quick, I promise. It's kind of a summary of that book that you guys have before you, just a real quick summary, kind of point out some highlights. I know we should've went into detail about a lot in the general fund, but I'll kind of get every single fund. And so we'll go through it pretty quickly. If y'all have any questions, just please feel free.
Carol, you'll send this to us.
And, and, and understand too, that I've been working on this, these numbers for a couple of months now. So if I go through them pretty quickly, just stop me and say what's going on here, and then we'll go from there, so, just ahead of time. This is the vision that, you know, the city of Greenville, to build on our hometown values and rich heritage as a diverse community by providing quality, cost-effective services to create an enjoyable, vibrant place where families and businesses choose to live, grow, and prosper. And, and you guys sent that, set that vision up last year, and that's kind of what we built this budget on. The principles down there at the bottom, and the philosophy is pay as you go, as you well know, and the fundamentals, we concentrated on public, public safety, infrastructure, and quality of life. So when we were putting all this together, those are the three things that we focused on to build this budget overall in every single. Just wanted to point out some important dates. Obviously, you know, we're presenting this to you guys tonight. And then we'll also, when the regular session comes, you know, we'll set up the first public hearing, which will be August 22nd on the tax rate. Then September 12th, we'll have our first public hearing on the budget, and then the second public hearing on the tax rate. And I'll kind of explain that a little bit more when we get in the regular session. And then September 26th, obviously, is the deadline to have the second public hearing on the budget, adopt the budget, and also adopt the tax rate. So just give you a short little timeline, those are the important dates that you guys are, have.
Anything else?
Yeah, it's not working, sorry. Oh, there it goes. Okay, this is a summary of all the fund balance that we, that we worked through with every single fund. These include general funds, special revenue funds, water, wastewater, capital funds, internal service funds, any kind of thing. This is also, this is also in your budget book as well, for you guys to follow through. You'll notice out to the right, those four funds that we have calculated target fund balances, those are targets that we have to reach per, per city policy. So that's why those are designated out to the side, and you'll see each one of those, which is the general fund, the debt service fund, the water wastewater fund, and the airport fund. Those all have str, got, policy guidelines that we have to follow to keep those fund balances at that. And Mr. Ensign, to answer your question, the, the fund balance target there is $5,096,000. That's the target that we have to hit, 20, which is 20% of expenses in the general fund. So that just gives you a little bit of a snapshot. You guys have this in your budget books, just so, and y'all can see it. I think it's on around page 38, I think. This is kind of small, these are our targets, general fund 20% target, minimum 15%, maximum 25%, same in the water, airport as well, and then debt service is 1/12 of the next year's principal and interest payments. And this is every single fund combined, and it's broken down by your revenues and your expenses. And you'll notice at the bottom, we've got, I can't hardly read that, 9.94% increase in the overall general fund balance of every single fund in the city. So that's good, that's a good sign. Just kind of breaks down each, what's property tax, what's pilot, sales and income that has water and sewer built into it and everything like that.
Let me ask a question about that.
Sure.
You're saying that we have basically almost 10% more in fund balance this year than we did last year?
Correct, yes. Overall, in every single fund.
In all the funds combined.
All the funds combined, yes. Okay, these are our total budgeted expenses for every single fund. So this will follow along with the, the chart that I just gave you. You'll see public works in there as a big one, public safety, and then it just breaks down to each smaller one. The, all the, everything that's in this presentation is also in your budget book too. And we can give you a presentation, the copy of the presentation as well, so when you have more time to digest everything. Total budgeted revenues, you'll see sales and income is the biggest one, obviously that's due to water and sewer. You've got your property taxes at 13 million, sales tax total as an 8.5 million, which includes every single fund that gets some kind of, in that category, fees and service charges, it breaks down to a lot of different little revenues that the city receives. And that breakdown is also in your book as well. Like we talked about, I believe you can talk about one cent on the adblocker tax rate will generate 175,000. That allows for protested and frozen values, and also assumes a 98.5% collection rate. This one's a little bit smaller, so I apologize, but it's, it's also on page 42 in your book. This is just the general fund, and it just kind of breaks it down and gives you just a snapshot of, you know, where we'll end up at 15,000 over our target fund balance. Snapshot of water and wastewater, in the water and wastewater, it's an enterprise fund, so we call it retained earnings as opposed to a fund balance, it's just different accounting terms. Participated, or projected retained earnings at the end of the year will be 7.9 million, which will, which is good to have with all the infrastructure needs that we have in a water and wastewater fund. And then this is a snapshot and summary of all the debt that the city has. I broke it down by general fund and water sewer fund. And this is strictly just amounts of the issue, amounts outstanding at the end of the year. And this is just principal, it breaks it down by, you've got your revenue bonds on the bottom, you've got your, the, the top bond number is the refunding bonds that we did last year. So this kind of gives you a snapshot. And there's a whole section of the debt service in your budget book that you can look at and ask any questions that you'll need to. This is a quick snapshot of where we're gonna stand with a lot of assumptions, just keep that in mind, over the next, until I think 2030, till all, all of our debt that we currently have on the books will go off of the books. You'll see that red line there going from after 20, year 2120, fiscal year 2122. Our, our INS, if you'll see, it's the third column from the left. Our INS dollars that we'll pay in 2122 is 4.7 million. The next year, we'll only pay 2.6 million. So we'll drop about 2 million off of our INS, off of our debt. So that'll be a bit, that's why we designated that with that red line. And this is assuming a lot of things, a lot of assumptions on the bottom that you'll see, that will allow us to put that, that extra, almost 2 million back into the MNO side of things. If everything stays the same that it is today, which I know a lot can change in five years, but that's just a lot of assumptions that are made, and a lot of growth assumptions as well. But that'll just kind of give you a snapshot of our INS rates, if we wanna guesstimate at those. Like I said, this is just kind of another snapshot when we go from the 4.7 million down to the 2.6. So our tax-supported debt will drop that much in one year. And it's, it's due to the way things were structured, the way debt payments were structured, just debt being paid off and going off the books, and that kind of thing. Any other additional questions that y'all have? You have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item we have on the working session is public money, money funding for non-governmental. Who's gonna handle that?
Four years ago, when I first got on the council, the financial house, I go back to that fire truck, we're still paying off an eight-year-old fire truck, this was the previous administration. Mr. Ibrahim's pay-as-you-go method, we're not doing these things, we're buying them as we go, paying for them as we go. When I look over here, it's this INS, still, we're paying 25 cents of our 699, 25 cents to pay off debt in the past. Mr. Ibrahim, thank you so much for putting our financial house in order these last four years. And again, that's one reason I arrived, because of the financial situation. And again, I appreciate your leadership, and thank you for what you've done under the financial house of Greenville round. And I admire you, and again, I greatly appreciate your expertise. Thank you.
John, you're gonna do the presentation on that, I'm sure you might as well.
Okay. Okay, we met twice. The first time we met, we decided that we needed to meet with the individuals that were requesting funds, and we wanted to find out a little bit more about where they were getting all the funding from. And these were Dallas Symphony Orchestra, Senior Center of Resources, Keep Greenville Beautiful, and Drug Free Greenville. At the first meeting, we agreed to fund Dallas, the Drug Free Greenville, what they requested, and Keep Greenville Beautiful, what they requested. So we had a second meeting with Dallas Symphony Orchestra and the Senior Center of Resources, and that was on July 24th. And we got presentations from both of those groups. And we agreed to fund the Dallas Symphony Orchestra, the $5,000 they requested. And we had come up with an amount of, for Senior Center, of an amount of $25,000 plus $5,000 budgeted for children to be carried to and from the sports department to the library.
So that's a recommendation you're bringing before the council?
That was what we came up with, that was the next...
None of that is approved yet until the council approves.
That's true.
I'll put the dollar amounts for KGB and Drug Free.
KGB was $10,000, Drug Free Greenville was $6,500.
Okay, we need to get that to the council members so they can look at it and maybe vote on it next week. I find the numbers for that, they, last part, they're very high for what I think they do, so maybe there's a better explanation. But I think in the past, what we've done is we've granted them $18,000. It sounds like to me that you're going to $30,000.
That's true. I remember the amounts we did last year was up with $18,000.
And now you, you wanna go to $30,000? That will help the game up there. Okay, however, come. Yes. That is up for interpretation?
It is. We're only three states.
All right, Dean, any questions or comments on that?
Mayor, I have your side concerned, we need to discuss that next time we come to it.
Yeah, because I'm not ready to approve those numbers yet.
Appreciate you.
It is 10 minutes after 6:00, and I apologize to the audience for the delay, we're gonna take about a five-minute break, so that we can take a quick break, and then we'll get back and move forward.